Julia, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing good. Sitting in front of the other computer and I keep grabbing the mouse and I'm like, why isn't this working? Most of the other computer. Hi Rufus.
Hey, how are you Lynn?
I'm doing good, how are you doing?
Good. Just looking at your email from earlier.
I tried. What you having for dinner?
Beans and rice and whatever we could find.
That's what's in the oven, I'll have to eat after the meeting.
Well, sometimes I just can't wait that long.
I don't blame you, it's not done yet. Say that again, I'm sorry.
I said same, that's why my video is not on yet.
Mine's not done yet or else I'd probably be joining you. We should do that at dinner meeting.
I know.
Hey Darlene.
Hi.
Hi Darlene.
Hello Rufus.
So, let's see.
Hey Kai. She's on yet. Next thing.
Hey, how are you?
Hey John.
Hey Rufus, it's gonna be an interesting night tonight.
A long one. Lots of big things to discuss.
Hey Darlene.
Hello. Hi Don. Hi Diane.
Why?
Hey Darlene.
Yes.
Can I send you? Like a notice of a meeting and agenda way early? Like.
Way early is great.
Board of Assessment appeals at the end of February, but I don't want to forget.
True, you can, you can definitely do that, yep, we can post it and get it filed.
Okay, thanks.
We do have enough for a quorum, so I can call this Park and Recreation Commission Special Meeting to Order. At 7:01. As we're gonna move on to elevation of alternates, as I've said in the past, we need to do some changes there and unfortunately, they need to be done, they can't wait until the bylaws and Constitution Committee finish their stuff, so Darlene is here to explain how alternates should be handled.
It's actually, hi, it is actually right in your bylaws. As far as how you, the commission should have been managing your alternates. And it specifically states that alternates are not needed to be elevated unless there is not a quorum. So at this time, because you have four members present of your board, you have a quorum. So you would not have to elevate the alternates. I will say that some of your, in the process that and how it's written and how you're managing the elevation of alternates, that's probably needs to be clarified because it talks about if a member is absent or disqualified. I'm not sure what the definition of disqualified is, whether they mean a member abstains or, so there's really some needed legal counsel to understand what was the intent of that section and how to utilize the elevation of your alternates. So that the point of where a board should not be elevating alternates unless they have to make a quorum. That is part of the process of any board or commission.
Darlene, so technically I'm an alternate, I mean, can I stay on and do the minutes? I just don't say anything?
Absolutely, well, actually that goes back to a board and commission can try to identify how they'd like to utilize their alternates. Alternates are actually advised and it's a benefit to any board for alternates to attend all meetings. Because naturally at any point, they may be needed to sit in on that next meeting, so that they've attended. There is lverse in whatever those topics are and they're not needed to be brought up to speed to be able to attend that following meeting based on whatever topic. So Diane, definitely you're, you know, an alternate can stay and attend the meeting. It, at some point then would have to go to, when you say about discuss, that's something that needs to be qualified as far as if you can be a participant in the discussion of the topic. But we're trying to, you know, at least step into the first step of how you should be managing your alternates.
Do we have, I know, with some boards and stuff, you have to keep track of which alternates you elevate and then you have to rotate them?
That's something that you're going to have to address when you rewrite or, you know, do a revision of your bylaws. It's not in your current bylaws on how that's handled. Right now, yours read that the individual who's going to be absent or disqualified actually gets to choose which alternate that they want to put forward. If in the event that they don't do so, and the chairman can. But your, your bylaws don't say, so just let's say as an example, John Grant wasn't gonna be here tonight. It doesn't say how he should appoint that alternate, is it by an email, is it by, you know, how are you doing, how are you managing appointing that alternate? And that's not addressed. And you write Rufus, sometimes they want to make sure that you alternate them, some boards and commissions actually do it by political affiliation. But it is something that your commission's gonna need to look into and how you want to set up that part of the process and if there's anything that's statute driven.
Thank you Darlene, is there any questions?
Yeah, I have a totally different question for Darlene. But it has to do with bylaws and the Constitution. So, at our first meeting in January, there were two nominations for chair. One of the nominations was an alternate. But in reading the Constitution and the bylaws, it, it looks as if it, the commission cannot exceed six members, so you can't really.
So you know what, I think that for sake of staying on the agenda, I'm gonna stay on the meeting for you for when that topic comes up, your bylaws and constitutions. And at that point, we can, if it's, if the question's asked again, I'd be more than glad to chime in.
I thought you were leaving.
Nope, I won't leave.
Okay, never mind.
Sure.
All right, I want to say that our two, I've said this before, our two alternates are two of the most involved members of this commission. They are amazing and I hope they both continue to be important members of this commission as much as they can be. We'll move on to acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
John, thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, correspondence, we do have one. And we'll read it into the minutes if I can get it loaded. Bear with me just a minute here. It's not loading. Okay. I'll load on this one. Dear Kent Park and Recreation Commission, I recently learned that you are in the process of deciding who the new chairman of the commission will be. Having been the interim Park and Recreation Director, I can attest that the chairman position is very closely involved with the work of the director and requires dedication, organization, and the ability to collaborate. The current chairman Lynn Harrington is dedicated and has served the Park and Recreation Commission for many years. That being said, I strongly feel the town of Kent will be best served by a Park and Recreation Chairman who is open to change and collaboration and sees that the commission is not, sees the commission not as their own but as a collective and cooperative group. I understand that Julia Neff was nominated as a potential chair and I would support whatever role she decides to take with the commission. In working with her, I found her to be intelligent, motivated, and open to exploring new ideas while fostering productive and meaningful relationships with myself, fellow commissioners, and the community. I was intrigued by the possibility of co-chairs and think that could be a great solution. If not deemed a viable option for the commission, then I would ask anyone who would like to be considered as the chairman to speak on the record to how they would work with the new director and the rest of the commission to ensure the success of the new director and future programming. I commend you all for the work you have been putting in and look forward to seeing what the future holds for Kent Park and Recreation. Thank you for serving our community, sincerely Miranda Lovato. This will be entered into the minutes. Right, we have a few people, any public and invited guests, does anyone want to speak now? All right. We'll move on to election of chairman. Rufus, would you like to take over like you did before and I believe you said there's a a way to vote by ballot that you're familiar with?
Um.
Or the poll or?
I don't know whether we had it set up, so I think we would have had to have done that ahead of time.
Oh, yep.
But as a.
The host or co-host can pop up a poll, but it has to be one of those two.
Can pop up to do what?
Yeah, you'd have to go out to the meeting instance and go into it, create the poll. But you can do it, you should have it on your bottom tool.
I have it.
Okay, now, so.
Just a clarification though, I think your voting has to be public. I don't think you can do a secret ballot on this, on the chairman.
I think I was referring to our bylaws or constitution.
The bylaws is vote by ballot, which means it, it.
Is that incorrect Darlene?
Lynn, Lynn is correct.
Okay.
A boarding commission, any votes that are taken by a board or commission need to be made publicly because ultimately, anybody who votes no to something, it's supposed to be on the record. Basically how you're voting should be on the record and entered into those minutes.
So we'll do a roll call. Correct, yep.
And I'm gonna make a note, that's one, another thing we need to change on the bylaws.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, bylaw committee.
Oh, sorry, this is Julia, so to clarify, since Diane and I are both alternates, are we not, we're not voting in this then? Because we were not.
That's also part of the bylaws. On the bylaws as they exist. That the alter, alternates cannot vote for that.
Officer.
But, I, I, you know, at this point, I'd like to re-ask Darlene the question. Um, whether or not you understand that is, is it possible for an alternate to run?
Yeah.
You're muted, Darlene.
So in looking at that question, an alternate can't act as a chairman because it, the chairman is ultimately the officer who opens every single meeting. An alternate doesn't become a member until he or she is elevated. So there's, there's no way for an alternate to act as a chairman. You know, ultimately, you don't have any voting authority or, or participation in that meeting until you've been given that elevation. So you can't act as a chairman because you can't have any of those designated responsibilities or authorities because you're not that position because you are not acting in that role every single meeting. Could I just say one quick thing? Sure. As a non-elevated alternate, um, just for the record and to make my position clear on this, because we were waiting two weeks while I thought about it. I ultimately came to the conclusion myself that I didn't think it was appropriate for the person who had been on this commission the least amount of time to become the chairman and take over after less than a year of experience on it. But like I said before, I am always happy to help and enjoy working for the commission. And maybe in another year or something like that, or in another few years, it would make sense, but it just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you Julia.
Um, Julia, is that, are you sort of officially withdrawing then?
Yeah, I don't think that I could be elected anyway because I'm an alternate, but.
Well, that's was my concern was according to the existing bylaws and things, it doesn't look as if an alternate would be able to run. Because you are, you already have, and there's a sentence in there that says that the commission cannot exceed six members. Which it, you could, you'd have to kick off a commissioner every meeting.
Yeah.
In order to, to do that.
No, this was something that I sought out anyway. So, I'm happy and hopefully one day I'll be elevated. But I'm happy to help, I just wanted to make all that clear, thank you Rufus.
Okay, so, at, at the previous meeting, there were two nominations, one, one was for Lynn and one was for Julia, but with Julia not qualifying, we either stick with just Lynn or is there any other nomination? With no other nominations being offered. Lynn being the only person running, I think. We, we just vote, are we, Darlene, do we have to vote individually on this? So why don't we start with, I'm just going by my screen here. John, you're the first person I see.
Yeah, I suggested her and I vote for her.
Rufus?
Yeah.
Sorry, point of order, I would just actually make somebody make a motion.
Oh, okay.
And second it, and then take a vote.
So, do we have a motion to re-up Lynn as chairman?
Yes, I make a motion, I make a motion that we select Lynn Harrington as the chairman of Park and Rec.
And we have a second?
Second.
Second, but Blythe. And now I have to go one by one? So John, or John said yay. Blythe. Blythe is muted.
All right, yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Up, 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 is that it? Oh Kate, sorry, Kate.
Yeah, yay.
Okay, Lynn?
Yay.
And I guess myself is a yay too. Um, and Abby, I think can't make it tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I'm gonna hand it back to you Lynn.
All right, thank you. Um, starting an old business, winter programming, I have nothing on learn to skate. I have to reach out to Lee and I'll have a report for next week and next meeting. Basketball. There was something in Abigail's email. Oh, that's that one. Okay, so basketball, Abigail wrote, I'm collaborating with Brian Hastings, a local parent, and I believe once was a commissioner, he was. He will be coaching and is looking for an additional coach, we are hoping to start the program within the next few weeks. It will be extremely helpful to have Jared's help as soon as possible. Sessions are planned on Tuesday evenings, split into two groups, pre-K and kindergarten, and then first and second 40-minute sessions. The goal of this program is to provide kids with an upbeat and fun introduction to basketball. Kids will learn introductory drills each week that build upon one another. Each session will include several drills and competitive gameplay to ensure every player has a great time and develops skills necessary to grow as a player in person. The coaches will facilitate drills, encourage players to take risks, and provide tips and tricks for how to improve.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
What are the latest rules and regulations as far as COVID goes for indoor sports like that?
I have no idea, I would guess that.
It's, it's masked, I mean, we, we have our, our practices masked and unless you're, and then unless you're in active play at the high school level, you have to be masked. So if you come off the court, you sit on the bench, you are masked, if you're in active play, you don't have to be masked, but all spectators have to be masked and the coaches need to be masked and I don't know about the refs.
Hey Blythe, is, is there a minimum, I mean, is there a maximum of children that we can have or?
Uh, where's this, where's this happening?
At Kent Center School?
Hey. Does anyone know where she's, is it Kent Center? Kent Center.
Yeah, and I believe that Kent Center right now, I'm not positive, but I think that somebody had said that right now for their games, parents aren't coming in to watch, so I imagine that would be the same for us right now, but I also think that that would change as soon as numbers start going down again too.
Yeah, I mean, all I can really say is, I, I don't really know the rules for elementary level sports unfortunately, but schools at my level have been given a fair amount of leeway in terms of, do they even want to play other schools, what are they gonna require from other schools, what kind of testing are they doing? Those sorts of things, I don't know how Kent Center is running, for example, it's gym classes. Or if they have a limited number of kids who would be using the gym at any one time, so those are details that I don't know.
Anything else on basketball? All right, um, ski club update Julia?
Yeah, we've had our first two sessions, um, I think I said before, ultimately we ended up, I believe, with 36 kids. And it's been going really well, we have our third session tomorrow night. I think that everybody's been really happy with the program so far, it's been great.
I heard out and about that someone who has a child saw on Facebook about it and is excited for getting their kid involved next year.
Awesome, that's great, yeah, we actually, um, two more people, or actually I think three more people tried to sign up after they had seen details on it on Facebook, but Mohawk's at capacity right now, that night, but hopefully next year we can do even more.
That's awesome. Okay, Director Search Committee update. We have Jared who starts on the 31st. I think we really only need to meet one more time to wrap things up and approve minutes and a little housekeeping things.
Lynn, would this be the appropriate place to talk about that idea that Abigail put in her email about the orientation document for Jared and just to kind of give her the go-ahead with this plan that she had for what this would entail, it looks like she was volunteering to get, at least get this started. But I don't know if you want to review that information from that same email that had the basketball information in it?
Back there.
That we had talked about, you know, providing some grounding for him in terms of kind of documentation and who's on the, who's on the commission and stuff like that.
I mean, I think that would be part of like the next meeting, he'll come on, but I don't see a problem with an introductory.
Well, I don't know, did you, did anybody, I don't know if people take, took a look at that, I think she was volunteering to put something together that was in writing. She, she said, I don't know, Lynn, do you want me to just read what she wrote in the email?
Sure. Go ahead.
She said, it's some kind of an orientation, orientation document for Jared, I envisioned this would include the 2021 recap, which, God bless Rufus, which she would link in there, the year schedule with key milestones such as capital planning, submission to annual, of the annual report, seasonal program cadence, like what happens each summer, fall, winter, spring, a brief intro of each commissioner, one or two sentence bio, as well as goals for Parks and Rec, challenges we have been facing, she said, I know this is harder to pull together, but perhaps very helpful, for instance, I know that playing fields and sports teams have been an issue since 2007. She said she's happy to get this document started if the commission would like her to. She said she's happy to get this document started if the commission would like her to move forward with this.
What do you guys think?
I don't think it could hurt. I mean, something helpful to get your feet wet. I mean, I would have loved to have some kind of document like that when I became the head of school.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can't really hurt, I don't think.
So we're all welcome to respond to her email with the information she was requesting.
I think, Michael, maybe what I'll do is if everybody agrees, I'll just write back to her email and tell her we all agreed she could get started with that and share it with us as a doc and we can all put it together, kind of piecemeal it together the way. You know, just as a as a Google Doc, if that works.
Have a motion for that, please?
Motion to prepare to allow Abigail Smith-Hanby to begin a orientation document for the incoming. For the incoming director.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Lynn, I think we also ought to, maybe not now, but we ought to also look at the idea that maybe the director shouldn't be the one responsible for taking minutes at meetings.
We will get to that when we discuss the bylaws and constitution changes.
Okay.
ASP Director Search Committee update. Basically, we had a couple interviews that have not panned out. And we put the ad back in the paper or back in face on Facebook this morning. ASP is covered for the next couple of weeks and when Jared comes in, he will get acquainted with ASP and hopefully we'll have some more applicants and go from there.
It is covered?
It is covered. Yes, we have partnered with HYSB, the Houstonic Youth Services Bureau, and they're providing us with some coverage from their staff.
Do you want? The kids helping to come show up again?
Yep. Off that. I spoke with the counselors today and they will continue on their regular schedule. Any questions on that? Great.
Lynn, it's Jean. I just have a quick question. So if HYSB is filling that gap for two weeks, that's the twenty-eighth. In theory. That's there's gonna be a major gap there because Jared doesn't start till the thirty-first, correct?
Isn't that the weekend?
Yeah, twenty-ninth and thirtieth are Saturday and Sunday.
So Jared starts on Monday, the thirty-first, correct?
Correct, so. I'm not saying HYSB won't be in there. I'm just saying right now we have coverage from them for the next two weeks. What I'd like to do is have. I don't know. Actually, right now I haven't gotten that far ahead. We haven't gotten that far ahead, so. We're hoping some people. You know, apply and we have to keep on it. I don't, I'm hoping that they can do it. I'm hoping as you know, in the director's job description, they are responsible for ASP staff, but I don't want to take the poor guy and just throw him in there, so we may see if HYSB can do an additional week. I don't know.
Right, so in theory, the two-week mark, if it starts today, is February first, so that's in theory, Jared's second day. If I could be so bold as to make a suggestion, I would reach back out to HYSB and ask them if they can cover for an additional two weeks because that would provide with some sort of some transition for Jared and HYSB and the counselors to work together to get him sort of briefed in and but still have the coverage for those families. That's so, so critical.
Yep. Yeah, we're gonna, we're working diligently to keep this filled and hard and it's taken up many of my days making sure that there's coverage there. So yeah, I get it. And I, like I said, I don't want to throw him in there, so we'll ease him in slowly and let him learn. He's got a lot to 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 learn. I mean, he's very capable. He needs to learn the ropes. He doesn't need to learn the job so much. And we're working on it. Anything else on that? That committee will meet again since we have the ad out, so we need to meet again and and keep up. Update on the seasonal maintenance contractor, John, anything on there?
So we missed our our open window here to try and get some people to come in. So we've only had one app submission. And so we're gonna have to put that out to bid because of the the size of the of the contract. So I'm gonna start. Well, I will put it in the in the papers again, Waterbury and the Spectrum. And hopefully we can get three more people again, so three more people. So let's see what happens. It's tough. I mean, these guys go away for two weeks, almost two months, depending on who they are. I mean, it's just, it's hard to get them at the right time, so let's see what happens.
We'll address this shortly when we get down to the budget, but in going through the budget and everything, I found that last year we updated, we put seven thousand dollars more into our maintenance line, and that was to cover a seasonal maintenance worker, so the money is in there now.
Okay. I mean, is right. I mean, can I can I get the commission's approval to place an ad or do you want to wait till Jared's in?
No, I would go ahead and keep getting started with that. We could probably motions are always good if someone would like to make a motion to continue the ad.
So moved.
Thank you, Blythe, a second. I'm, is that a, okay, yeah, second. So how long are we continuing this ad for?
We run it for two two weeks straight.
Okay. So a two-week ad in the newspapers of what, John?
The Waterbury Republican and the Spectrum of New Milford.
Okay.
That should pick up the local guys, which is great.
Okay. All right, we have a first. Was there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Anything on the Parks Master Plan?
She's not here today, right?
Yeah.
No, we haven't. We haven't met or talked about that.
Okay. Twenty-one, twenty-two monthly budget report. I think the last one we have that it went out before. Budget for the fiscal year twenty-three. So before the meeting, I sent you some papers, some documents. Try to pull them up here.
Yeah, thanks for tackling that, Lynn.
We'll see.
You have very neat handwriting.
Oh, thank you. For a lefty. How do I find these? How do I search for a? Something?
Go back in your email.
Go into the email that you sent us and you can open the attachments if you want to share your screen.
Right.
I'm going through all my things here. Okay, I have to take off the share. And then what do I do? Sorry.
You can actually just go right to the, can you go into your sent email folder and open up the one that you sent to us just before the meeting? And then you can scroll down to the attachments on the bottom and open those on your computer and share your screen. One by one. So pick the one you want to start with and bring that one up first.
Blythe, if I, will you do this for me, please?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Okay. So let me go in and find this. Hold on.
Should be able to share there. Sorry, people. That's a new one. Usually have it ready.
I'm getting there. All right, which one do you want me to pull up first?
You can start with number one.
Okay, the handwritten notes on the paper?
It should be labeled number one. It's the worksheet.
Okay. Okay, one. Yeah, all right. There we go. Oh, gosh, of course, it's sideways. Go back to this. Share my transfer screen. Can people see that? Of course, how do I flip it? I have no idea.
Blythe, if you can open it into like Adobe Reader or Adobe DC, you can just.
Working viewer.
Or try the three dots on the all the way on the right side of that toolbar that you were just at. It's on at the last second, way, way, way over next to the download under the right.
Uh, yeah.
Down lower.
Yeah, down here.
Have anything? Sorry, but it might have.
I think if you download it and then click.
Okay, let me try that.
Yeah, you should be able to rotate it once it opens up new browser.
Okay. Yeah, it's fun. All right.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Mikey.
Thanks, thanks. All right, so. Um, I went in to see the town. I made this up last night and then I went in to see the treasurer to get a clarification on a couple things. So you'll see the Park and Recreation one, three, two, eight hundred. That's for the Halloween safety stuff. That's contributions like from the Lions Club and and anybody who gives us money towards the necklaces and things like that. Park and Rec passes. I raise this in hopes. Again, these are just my numbers. Please throw in your thoughts and everything as we go through it. Currently, our park passes are thirty-five dollars and on a good year, we can, we sell about a hundred of them. I feel with Jared coming in that there is going to be a lot of great things happening and we're gonna you know, we have pickleball coming in and I felt it's been a long time since we raised any of our rates. And so that's my idea of a hundred at fifty dollars. Next one is Park and Rec Sports. That is the money.
Do you want us to chime in or do you want to get through a certain section before we make comments?
You can comment, Michael.
Okay, I definitely agree. There's room to raise the passes. I thought fifty first plus seemed a little high, but again, would would like to see it raised for the reasons that you said. I would suggest forty-five, perhaps. Maybe there's a psychological thing with the with the five-oh.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking the exact same thing. You know, you hit a fifty, like a round number like that, people go, ah. But forty-five is, I think that would be a good way to start.
What about, what about maybe doing it like fifty unless you have multiple kids and then you you know, a family pass might?
It is a family pass.
Oh, that's so the whole family for fifty bucks? That's it?
It's a bargain. Okay, so. So if we are going to raise it at some point very soon, we would need to make a motion to raise that. We cannot do it right now because it's not on our special meeting agenda. So whatever we decide at our next meeting, we will have to make a motion to to deal with that. Or have to put it on our agenda. Other comments on the forty-five to fifty?
I'm okay with fifty, but that's.
We have to make a tentative decision here because this has to go in.
Based on what Jared did over in his other job, I believe that the fifty dollars is well worth it because I know he's going to bring in great programs and people will be excited about it. So I say fifty dollars is good for the whole family.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, it sounds like there's support for fifty.
We'll go down to line eight twenty, Park and Rec Sports. Another area, I believe we charge minimal or have been charging minimal. Julia, was there a charge on soccer?
I, for the soccer program?
Yeah.
I I believe there was. I think I paid it. I didn't organize the soccer program, but I believe when I registered my kids, I paid for it, I think.
You remember how much? So in in the past, we've done very low numbers, like five dollars, ten dollars. I'd like to look into the, I wouldn't have time to look into that a little bit.
I want to say it was like fifteen, but I'm not positive. Hold on.
I would request that we increase the sports fees to twenty or twenty-five dollars.
So you think it's been fifteen now or or less than fifteen?
Yeah, it's really very inexpensive.
It's really inexpensive, yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I was gonna say it feels to me like the price, you know, the the price for participation. I have not done that years, but it was always quite low and I'm sure it probably has not risen with too much with the times. And I don't think we've changed this line item in a number of years either.
Right. If you look at fiscal year twenty, we brought in just about fifty, six hundred dollars. We budgeted for thirty-five. There were no sports in twenty-one and we've had a little bit of stuff for. And we've had a little bit of stuff for this year. I don't know why there's no budget number in there.
Yeah, that's a good number then.
So. You know, again, these are estimates on what we think we're going to bring in. What we're hoping. So if we go to the next line, 830, Park and Rec classes, that's all the, the programs that we do where the. You know, if it's the Tai Chi or yoga or whatever's going on, they take 90%, we take 10%. I don't know how, I have, I forgot to ask about this, but that $9,000.
That's quite a jump.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure, I forgot to ask Barbara about that today, I do have it circled.
Is there any chance that number is somehow incorrect? I mean, it looks so out of place.
Yeah, exactly, I have to check on that, I'm not sure.
And I would be really careful about trying to budget $10,000 if really. If that's way lopsided.
Yeah, that could. I was basing it off that number.
Soccer had been $5. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So. If we do.
If you do $10, you're doubling your income.
That $10,000 number. Is, that's not, that can't be correct until we find out what that 999 is. Because if we do. If we did $20 and let's say for soccer, we had about 40 kids, that's $800. That's, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, I'm thinking the wrong thing. Oh yeah, we're still up here.
So it's saying someone made 100 grand and we took 10 grand.
Right. I was confusing the two lines, we didn't really finish with the $4,000 line, did we? Or do we say that was okay?
That was the one that Julie was trying to figure out how much she had spent for the soccer enrollment, the sports.
Okay, so yes, that one's fine, if we go up to the 20 or 25.
Well, families are used to paying five and now we jumped to 20 or 20, is that, you know, I do worry about sticker shock.
I would, this would be where, you know, if you have multiple kids coming, maybe, you know, the first kid's 20 and then additional kids from the same family are 15.
So again, that's something that we would have to put into place in another meeting. So. A lot of this, I went back, thankfully, I kept all my old paperwork and stuff and I went back into old budgets and. And paper that Leslie put out, the worksheets, kind of like what I sent to you in writing type worksheets. And. We. Yes, I can see it in the background. And I tried to just go from there, so obviously 20 was a little bit messed up, 21 was totally messed up. And 22, we're getting back into some action. And I would like to see, you know, that 55, $5,600 number again. That's why I kind of went in the middle of the 35 and the 56 to pick 4,000.
Yeah, it looks good.
The 10%, the 830, that's. That's going to have to, I don't know what to do with that one. I will get Barbara the next time she's in the office this week and ask her what that's about.
Yeah, maybe for now, we just go off the, the 20 number.
Well, this one is 10% fees, this line 830.
Right, so that 1196 from. That seems more trustworthy than the 9993, so we use that as our budget number for now.
If we go back.
Round it up, out to 1,200 or something like that.
So that.
20, I think. I think there's any way that that has. The Mohawk Ski Program in it, but then it wouldn't have subtracted the check that we sent to Mohawk.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't that much money, but it would have been like. Close to $6,000, maybe, that's my guess.
Okay.
And then we also had money for the Tennis in the Parks Program, that would have done that, but all of this wouldn't then have included the check that we wrote to the USDA then.
Okay. I'll check with Barbara.
So is, is the Mohawk Ski thing, is that classes or is that sport? Is that classes?
Yeah, technically, there should have, it should have been under the 10% classes and there should have been a 10% fee added to it. But that's the type of thing that we add. Add to. If anybody comes in and wants to do a class at, through Park and Rec. At the community house, like I said, like the Tai Chi and stuff, we take 10%.
Well, I think if this, you know, this is fiscal year 22, actual year to date, so it probably, I think you're probably right, Julie, I think it's probably the, all the money that came in for. Mohawk without the. Payment to Mohawk. So that number's going to go way down.
Yeah, and then the same for Tennis in the Parks too, I think that between both of those and that would. Add up close to that, maybe.
You won't see the dispersment, you'll see the dispersment down below in the expense, so that could technically be, that's just income. So if you're saying, you know, six or whatever from Mohawk.
Yeah.
It's still going to read, it's still going to be in there because that's what we took out, but the expense will be down below. And this isn't detailed, so you won't see that, but.
Yeah, I, yeah, makes sense.
And it may not be reflected in here yet, even down below.
Well, what do we think about Mike's idea that kind of go back to the 20 number and maybe round up a little bit from that?
What, what 20?
The number from fiscal year 20 for line number 830. If that's a little bit more realistic. Number or the 20, we got hit to some degree on. Programs in 20 because of. COVID, did we? I don't know. Seems like a long time ago.
Yeah.
It would have been March to June of that year.
Right, and that's a good portion of our programs too.
Yeah. So maybe it does need to be more, more than the 1, 196, but. I think a 10,000, I think 10,000 is way over.
Yeah. But again, you know, we're already. We're already at, we've already brought in almost $10,000. Again, this is income, it has nothing to do with the expense, if you look down at line fee programs on 0234422, I'm sorry. Down in expense. That could include. Where I have ASP supply note there.
Yep.
That could include the payment to Mohawk. So there's your out.
Yep.
But the fact is, is that in other years. I mean, it's not the true number of the 10%, so. I'm still going to talk to Barbara about that and get clarification. Like these other numbers, the 1196, the 273, those are 10%. Of whatever fees were charged for the other classes. The 9993 is not a 10%, so. That. 10,000. Needs to go way down. So we want to try for 2,000? That was a.
That sounds good.
Some of the programs, you know, cost more than others, so it's a larger 10%. All right, so then we are on. ASP. One of the worksheets that I sent you. The only thing I suggested for ASP is increased by $1. We've been at $11 for a long time. Yes, no, maybe so, leave it alone, leave it where it was?
Yes, increase.
So the 17,000 that you see there is based on a previous worksheet. That I had of Leslie's, Leslie gave it to us. This is from the 1819 year, so this is August 30th, 2018 through June 13th, 2019. The program met 160 days between those two dates, total attendance for this time period was 1,730. And when you do that times 11. It comes out to a different number that's written down here, but. When I do the math out. I came to, so Leslie had, on this sheet, it says total revenue of $17,600. If we, we can, we should be able to at least do that. We're on a good roll with attendance as soon as we find somebody to keep it secure.
And the number's a little lower than 20 because it was closed for.
Correct.
Several months, okay.
And the older papers. In July, in the fiscal year 18, which means June, what, yeah, June of 18, we had brought in 13,409. Actual for July 18 through June 19 was 18,000. And then 1920 was 3,3500. So. I went in kind of between those, again, I'm hoping for a good year, I feel like with the new director coming in that. You know, I'm really excited for it and I, I think that there's going to be big changes with Park and Rec and it's going to work out great.
Aren't there more families in the town now too?
Yes.
Yes, that looks like a good number to me.
Yeah, me too.
Anyone else want to chime in? I mean, if you want to go down to like 15 or whatever. But you guys are all good with 17?
Yeah, I think based on what you said from 2018. And such, then yes, I'm, I'm good with it.
Right, we go down to Camp Kent. Again. Camp Kent has been at $110, I believe, for quite a long time. I propose moving that up to $150. If it's filled every week, that's 24 campers. $150 times eight weeks is $28,800.
288 or your, your number here, 238?
I, the 288 is the math, but.
Yeah.
I brought it down a little bit because we haven't always been filling the weeks.
Yeah, smart.
The last line, bus trips and programs. We will have a new social services director coming in, as you all know, that out of the job description, a couple of years ago, we did take out the. Park and Rec Director doing the luncheons, but there is still, you know. Recreational things that Park and Rec should do with the senior center. And, you know, cahoots with the new director there. So I put that back in there, it looks like it was taken out last year. And. Like you said, for senior bus trips, that was usually used for. Hopefully, we can get that going again, we can partner with Warren and Sharon and. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm actually glad to see that, I think it should be back in.
Salary of Director, we know that it's 60, what we don't know is, is the insurance and pension and, and those other things. Well, he won't have pension this year, but insurance. And that is calculated at a different time. By the. Whoever does that. Hourly employees. So. On the bottom of this are some. The little boxes that have the after school program, so the hourly employees is support staff. As of July 1st, the minimum wage in Connecticut will be $14. So, and the after school program, we have been offering it out at $21. So. One thing I did on my, on my worksheet. Was under ASP snacks and supplies was $3,000 and I put that accidentally under hourly employees. So that's why you'll see that cross out instead of 51, it should be 48. Although. I need to go back and check my numbers because I think I changed one. And I didn't bring the change down. But this is what we're at, so that. That will be 48, 754. And the supplies will go down into the fee programs, which. I think we're, Barbara and I discussed taking out the word fee and just have programs in there.
Lynn?
Yeah.
A member of the CAPRA, so we talked about lifeguards. And it seems like, and it seems like the minimum is going to be $18 for a lot of towns. Because they can't get anybody.
Yeah. So I had the lifeguards down at 16, do you guys want to move that up to 18?
That sounds realistic. Based on what John said.
We know for the past number of years, it's been hard to get lifeguards, you know, we even gave. Gave the class last year and said we'd pay for your class, but we still weren't able to secure any of them.
Yeah, I think we probably need to go higher than 16, 18, sounds good to me.
So that new number is.
So that'll be 720.
5832.
5480.
I can't, for the lifeguards, if it's 18 times 36 times 9.
But that, so hang on a minute, John, are you talking about the head lifeguard or you're talking about everybody?
Everybody.
So if we do the lifeguards at 18, we have to do the head lifeguard at like 20?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we're going to change that to 72 and if we do 18 times 36.
That's 5832 times three for the, if you have three lifeguards. 17,496.
Okay, so.
They almost 25,000 or 24,696.
Did those guys find? Okay, and then our other group would be the Camp Kent. Camp Kent. I had them at 17. And then the counselors at 1450.
You feel, how do you feel about paying the head lifeguard more than the Camp Kent Director?
Head lifeguard's got to have a, got to take a class and have like a a license.
Yeah.
And is responsible for three other people. Camp Kent head person does not need any sort of degree or license. That being said, you know, move it to 18 or 19. Remember, we need to cover as much as we can and we have to bring this forward to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen.
I don't have a problem with it necessarily. I was just looking at equity. That's all.
Anyone else want to chime in on that?
Thank you. Raise it to 18 for the head counselor and 16 for the other ones. Sounds reasonable to me.
Sorry, I had to step out. Can I?
I just, if we're trying to find good people, I would raise it to 18 for the head camp counselor and the 16 for the, for the two. Sorry, I can't see that one. I'd be in favor of that anyway.
Anyone else on that?
That sounds all right.
What did you say for the counselors, Kate?
16.
Got to follow the lifeguard setup.
So the total for the Camp Kent would be 15,360.
So that brings that line to 54,896. Is that what you got Rufus? Those three jobs added together? I mean, those three groups added together? Plus 600 for the ICE monitor.
Yes, 57,896 plus.
Use, are you using the 14,840, not the 17? On the, on the ASP stuff?
Oh, no, I used the 17, sorry. So it'd be 54,896.
Plus the 600 for the ICE monitor.
60.
55,496.
Okay. Everyone good with that so far?
Yep, yep.
Right. Um, we get into some office supplies. That was a little bit here and there, so I went down the middle. Postage went up a little bit. $15. And I don't know that, doesn't say that we've used any postage this year. Mileage, I kept the same. Jared's going to probably be going to a conference or a couple of meetings. And we do pay for mileage. Park maintenance, you'll see that from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22, there was that $7,000 difference and that's what we put in for the seasonal maintenance contractor. That is 023419. Park maintenance, yep. I suggest we keep that the same. We already have that contractor in there.
Yeah, I agree.
And the programs, those are supplies and stuff that we need for ASP. So 3,000 of that is for ASP approximately. That leaves 11 to by other needs. That could probably be for sports equipment if we need it. So sports supplies and ASP snacks and things like that. Telephone. That's the office phone and I think part of that is the Emory Park phone. Electric water and sewer that covers the the porta potties. Dues is for, I believe, the Connecticut Park and Rec Association. Conferences, put it in there in case he needs to go to one. And that is it. Any questions on there? Based on our discussion tonight and the changes that we've made, are we ready to bring this, to send this back to the treasurer, to forward to the Board of Selectmen or whoever the deal goes? So we've got be 750, 5,000, 4,000, 2,000. So that 10,000 line would come down to 4,000. I mean, come down 6, 8,061. So that would be the
Yeah, I guess the only, the only open item to me is that the 830 line, but it sounds like we, as we understand it, it's capturing the Mohawk and the one of the expense lines will increase to offset it. So we're comfortable with it. And, you know, just looking at the total income as an aggregate, 61,000 versus 36 in fiscal year 20, quite a jump. But as we discussed, fiscal year 20 was a little depressed because of COVID. And we have a number of new programs we want to launch with some increased fees on other revenue generating items. So that's, that's how I see the revenue side. And on the expense side, we have some pretty detailed support. So I, I'm pretty comfortable with that too.
Lynn, did you say you were going to change the 830 line to 2,000 at this point? And then the bottom line, the total income as well? Or are we leaving it at 10?
I just had four.
No, two.
Two.
So that'll bring
Sorry about that.
So that would be 53,300.
Correct.
Do we need a motion, Lynn, to accept?
So we're looking at 157. 801, did I add that right? 157, 801 is our expenses. But we've increased, we're hoping to increase our our income by a lot. And we're not really off. We're actually lower than previous years, but the insurance isn't in there. And I don't know who else needs to go in there. I don't know how much his insurance will be or any other numbers that needed to be added into the compensation line. All right, so I believe at this point, if everyone is good with those numbers, like I said, the 61,300 is changing to 53,300. And the total expenses is 157,801. If you guys are good with that, I would ask someone to call for a motion. Please detail it.
So 157 only stands out to me because I don't, I'm just looking at the budget from 22 being 169 for expense. And I didn't think we decreased any expense line item.
Um, the insurance, the, the previous the previous director had insurance and pension and a couple of little other things in there where the new director will not have pension. And I'm not sure when the life insurance kicks in or anything like that. So pension won't start for a year, I believe. So there is going to be a little bit more added to our 157.
Okay, yeah, I just think since we're doing this on the fly, you know, it would be understandable if you catch a, you know, an error between now and submitting it.
So if you look, Michael, go back up to the compensation line, the salary director and hourly employees.
Right.
You'll see that that adds up to 10712. But the actual compensation is 126. So that's like 26,000 in benefits.
Got it. Okay, I see. I see what you're saying. Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah. So again, I don't know how much the new director's benefits will cost. So we cannot add that amount in there. Would someone like to make a motion to forward this? And before we can make the motion, I will fix it up and send it back out just for informational purposes. And I will forward it to the treasurer.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget as detailed in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Kate. Any more discussion? I'm hearing none. Can I have all those in favor? Please say aye.
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 You, any opposed? Great. Big thing off our shoulders.
You can stop my screen, stops sharing my screen now, Lynn. Is that okay?
Thanks, Blake.
Yep.
Okay. Five-year capital plan. Oh, you know what? I forgot something. Okay. I was, we might need to go back to this. I was advised to I was advised to take 25,000 out of the five-year capital plan under the trail structure and maintenance and put that into our maintenance line this year.
Good, that'll cover a lot.
How do you guys feel about that? Because if we wait, you know, that's going to be five years out.
We should add it into the budget then.
That would bring us up to 182,801. How do the other members feel about that?
I mean, this is a rebuild, so it's well worth the investment.
The only I don't know if this would create a problem, but we'd have to go back and fix our motion if we choose to go forward with adding the 25,000. The other thing is that we would have to at our next meeting, make a motion to remove the trail structure and maintenance from the capital budget. Kate Blake, how do you guys feel about that? Yes, no?
Yeah, I said, I mean, you know, I think I always tend to side with John on these things and he's good with it, I'm good.
Yeah.
I think that would give Jared way more flexibility to decide how he wants to, you know, attack the, you know, it'll give him the flexibility to, to determine you know, park upgrades.
It won't be confined to just that, the trail structure maintenance. So first, I believe we need a motion to rescind the previous motion.
But moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Blake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we will need a new motion to approve the budget with a
Transfer.
You know, the income at 53,300 and the expense at 182,801. So it's actually comes out to about what, 12,000? $12,000 change from last year's, but.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget based on the discussion in tonight's meeting and capturing a transfer on the expense side of $25,000.
It's not a transfer, it's just an increase to the park maintenance line.
Okay.
Have the money yet to
Gotcha. With an update to the expense side in regards to park maintenance, an additional $25,000.
And that would make that line 48.
With a new amount of 48,000.
All right, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will rewrite that up all nice and we'll send it out. Okay. Five-year capital plan, use of funds. I would like to push that off, you know, not talk about it tonight, only because we are an hour and a half in and we still have a couple more things to discuss. There's really, there's a couple of ideas, I would like everyone to, at the next meeting, to bring forth any ideas on how you want to spend the funds that we have currently available for Park and Rec Playground over the Commiss Playground and every park playground.
You need a motion for that?
I don't think so.
Can I ask real quick, I know we got an email asking for some supplemental to our worksheet. I, I kind of lost track of that. Is there something we need to do with our submission from the other week?
Um. It would be helpful if somebody wanted to contact Barbara and just get a better idea of what type of narrative she wants, so.
All right, since I brought it up, I can put something together, no problem.
Okay, I'm not really sure, you know, more of what she wants, so feel free, she's very helpful.
Lynn, I would just make sure, if you want us to think about playgrounds, you let, you know, maybe put something out to all, to all people, since Abigail and Julie aren't on anymore, and make sure they've got the little kids, they might have some good ideas.
Sure. In the general sort of guidance for the narrative justification is keeping in mind the boards are looking for, just to, you know, paint a picture of the justification and the reasoning for the requests. Keeping in mind, new board members and just transparency, visibility and being able to tell that story without having to sort of go back to that commission, if that helps. Some, some are very brief, some are more detailed, it's up to you, but painting a good picture is always a good thing.
That help, Michael?
Yes, it does. Thanks, Jean.
Okay, next we have the bylaws, bylaws and constitution changes, first reading on articles five, six and seven. Who wants to take that? Is that you, Blake, or Kate? Blake, Kate or Michael?
I'm trying to actually find the, the document that we sent. I don't know if you want me to bring that up or not.
That would be fine.
Okay, let me look for that. Michael, you want to start talking? While I find this.
You just
Hey, can everybody see this?
Yep.
Okay, um, I, I guess I'll try to sum this up. I mean, Abigail did send a little something in here that part of what we've tried to think about in our subcommittee is essentially giving a little bit more responsibility and what did she say here? A, a future where the commission empowers the director and gives the director greater authority to make decisions. We propose refining, refining how the commission is organized to provide greater support to the director. One of our immediate propositions was to create a second officer. Not necessarily a co-chairman, we, we batted that back around a little bit, but we did feel that it would be helpful to have a second officer who we proposed would be a secretary who along with the chairman would be in support of the decisions and authority of the director. And obviously, a lot, some of these decisions will impact lots of other places on the bylaws and the constitution, which we, we didn't, we didn't look at, but what was proposed here were the three areas most dealing with this officer piece and the responsibility and the role of the, the director. So the first two articles, Article Five, which is about election of officers, and Article Six, which is about the duties of officers, address that subcommittee idea of adding another officer at the commission level for support for the director. So we, whatever you see in blue type here are words that we suggested adding to the bylaws and whatever is strike through is what we would take out to replace that, so then the notion of a secretary appears in Article Five, a chairman and a secretary shall be elected at an organizational meeting. Chairman and secretary elected by ballot, obviously now we know that by ballot it would take, would come out of that, since we, we don't vote by ballot. A majority of those present still constitute an election, the commission shall choose from its membership and may choose such officers as it deems necessary. That's actually language taken from earlier in the bylaws that it gives us the power as a commission to add additional officers as we see fit or necessary. And then, I don't know, you want to talk about these things one at a time, but I, I think the two are related, Article Four, Article Five and Six. The chairman shall preside at the meetings of the commission. And then we kind of gave the secretary, some of those secretary, the more secretarial pieces. Preparing the written agenda went down under the secretary. So the chairman shall preside at all meetings of the commission, approve membership on all committees. We felt approved membership was more appropriate than appointing all committees, which really Lynn has never sat there and pointed at us across the table and said, you, you and you will be on a committee. They've been volunteer committees, but she should approve the membership of the committees. Appoint an acting chairman in case of absence, represent the commission at public affairs and present the annual budget request to the Board of Selectmen. The secretary shall prevent, prepare a written agenda for all meetings in consultation with director. Taking the minutes of the monthly and special commission meetings. This is what we felt was really important, rather than having the director take, trying to scribble meetings as they, as they talk, this is an opportunity for us to reassign the, the duties of the director, which previously had been to take minutes. And appointing an act, an acting secretary in case of absence. All officers of the commission shall maintain the dignity and efficiency of the commission. Maybe we could start.
So Blake, you're taking, you're, you're taking this new article and you're replacing it with the article seven, section three, and so you're moving it up to six, right? Is that correct?
Article seven, no, this, this is what's existing here, Article Five and Six. We're proposing this different wording here to include the, the creation of a secretary position from among the commissioners.
Right.
And then Article, Article Seven would be about the duties of the, the director. Which basically just gives them the, the power here and the responsibility to pursue new activities. You know, basically the, the I don't know if we want to lump all this in the same discussion here, but Article Seven was about the duties of the director and it said only that the director was to supervise and maintain the recreational activities as set forth by the commission. And we felt that we wanted to say that we wanted them to pursue new activities which enhance the general program as determined in collaboration with the commission. Rather than us being the body that sets forth and then charges the director with doing all this other stuff, we wanted to give them written authority to not only do that, but also to find and bring to meetings and propose to the commission other ideas of their own. Because it's really not in anywhere else in the bylaws that they have that that authority or that you know, the ability to even do that. But I think, you know, the first two articles really are about the secretary piece. And the second, the, the Article Seven is really about slightly expanding the language when it comes to the duties of the director of park and recreation, and the only other thing that it would take away from the director here would be taking minutes at the meetings. Sorry, I'm kind of roundabout, there's, there's a lot of language in the constitution and the bylaws, which is amazingly repetitive. And there are other places, as we said, as Abigail said, and kind of her introductory comment, there are places that based on how people feel about this and whether or not we can make these adjustments, we would need to then go back and we would continue to do this kind of work going through the bylaws, making adjustments to the language and bringing them forward to the commission. We had one hour to pull this together, and we did. And so in our, if we approve of this, then we would go back in our next meetings and continue to do this strike through and add language. And Mike and Kate, please feel free to jump in if I'm not adequately explaining what our intent was for tonight's meeting and then moving forward.
No, I think
Thank you. That was, I thought that was brilliant, Blake, that summarized it really well. For me, anyway.
Are you guys asking us to take action on these three things right now, or are you just looking for approval of the direction you're heading in?
This is for the first reading.
Yeah, this is a, I guess this is a first reading, but we can't, we can't, there are a lot of changes we would make based on whether or not this is a direction that the commission would like to go in. Because as I said, this language is kind of peppered in throughout all of the bylaws and the constitution. It looks to us, and Jean, you can, is Jean still on? Jean, you could maybe talk a little bit about the feedback that we did get from the town attorney about having two separate documents that are a constitution and a set of bylaws. It sounds like that is not recommended, and so we would be looking to kind of combine both documents into one. But some of our work needs to proceed from whether or not we would add an officer to the commission and whether or not the commission agrees that we would like to kind of put gentle language in here charging and giving responsibility and authority to the director to do some work, not just only as a, as appointed or as instructed by the commission. Yeah, I guess, you know, it's, it's not as, as urgent as we originally kind of thought. We did dive into this before this meeting because we felt that if we were going to recommend co-chairs, we needed to have that language in place for us to look at today. We're not recommending that, so technically, no, we don't have to do any of this, but we really, as a subcommittee can't move forward with our work until we decide what the commission would like to do about adding an officer and expanding the director of park, park recreation duties as defined in the bylaws and constitution.
The only thing I would suggest maybe is that, because the secretary for other commissions is, is a secretary. Not necessarily a commission person. So, you know, if you're on the Board of Finance, they're paying somebody to be their secretary. And to stay in line with the other commissions, perhaps the secretary should be a paid position.
So it's already in the job description was, which was recently approved by the Park and Rec Commission, that the director is access secretary. He takes the minute, or they take the minutes and they work in collaboration with the chairman to make up the agenda. So this is in direct, some of this is in direct violation of, or direct difference than the job description that we just all approved.
Oh, I mean, that's, that's naturally going to happen when you're looking at your, your organizational documents.
But you can't just change this like that when it's going to conflict with the with the job description that was just approved.
Unless we
We, we'd have to change the job description.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to bring forward a, an amended job description to be voted on as well. I mean, I, I, I don't know if we're going to encounter huge pushback from the Board of Selectmen or from Jared himself if he can't take minutes at meetings.
Well, the thing is that we are paying somebody to do that, and it is part of their job. If we were going to put in another officer, I would suggest, as Robert's rules suggest, to put in a vice chairman, not a secretary.
So Lynn, are you, are you kind of referring back to, are you responding to Rufus's suggestion about paying somebody? I, I don't think any of us really imagined a situation where we would pay somebody else to do this, that this would just be a regular commissioner who would like, you know, would be a, a full member of the commission, but would act as either, whatever the type, whatever we call it, just somebody else to you know, to help with the, and we've got a very vast slate of responsibility as a commission. So somebody else to kind of take some of the clerical work off of the director so that they can focus more on programmatic development, maybe dropping in or supervising here or there, or whatever. It was just a, that was the idea. So what, what we call it, doesn't have to be a a secretary, but it sounds like we have two things to talk about, whether, you know, how we feel, number one, about make, having somebody who's paid. I agree that if this was going to be a paid position, it doesn't make sense for us to pay a secretary and a director. I, I, I personally would not recommend a paid secretary to take notes and do all these other things. I think that we could staff it from within our commission, and I'm not sure that we have to run our commission the exact way that other commissions are, are run or set up. And in terms of title of whatever this person would, would do, that's certainly also debatable.
So again, we are already paying somebody to do that.
No, I, I'm not even suggesting that we we're not, we wouldn't be paying a commission member, anyway. I'm just saying that I know a lot of the other commissions have secretaries who come in. I agree that that the that the, it does, it, to me, it does not make sense. I mean, and, and yeah, you know, we did agree to the job description, but I would prefer a director not having to take minutes. I don't, I, I, I think that's counterproductive. I think that.
That's part of his job description.
I, but it doesn't need to be.
Well, it is, it already is though. See, you can't go and take sections of these and just change them willy nilly. And we, we know why you did it. I mean, it was quite obvious in your meetings that this was done specifically for tonight's meeting. Um, you know, so that the chairman would be changed because some people are obviously having a problem with the chairman.
That's, that's actually not at all true. We have felt since the beginning, from before this, and you know, from our first meeting, that we felt, you know, based on the amount of, um, you know, the, the huge number of hours that we were putting in for these meetings and the organizational challenges that we had minus a director, yes, minus A S A, ASP, yes. Um, that there were other tasks assigned to the director of park and rec that should not lie with the director of park and rec so that the director can be a director and not a as much of a clerical worker as I think Leslie was, was wonderful at. But taking minutes, um, you know, I mean, I, this is where I come back to what Rufus just said. I feel like if you have the title of a director, you, you need to be given responsibility and kind of a directorship um, that doesn't necessarily include you sitting there taking minutes, um, on your own, um, you know, in your own committee meetings. So, um, I, I, you know, if I, if it were myself, if I have a, an administrator here at school, for example, and I am taking away one of their responsibilities because there's somebody else who I've brought on, who's going to take that. I'm not going to not then give them something else to do. I think the reason that I might remove that, um, you know, it's a, a, a set of duties is to either number one, give it to somebody who's more um, able to do those things, um, or to free up this person to focus on other things that I want them to focus on. And so what the subcommittee was feeling was that let's give the director of park and recreation more to do in terms of finding, pursuing, setting up, supervising, monitoring, um, and reporting and less to do about clerical. It had nothing to do with personalities involved.
Okay.
Yeah, I took a pretty, um, open look at this committee. I didn't have any specific objectives for it, just been looking at the language of the bylaws. It just seemed like there were some things that could be updated.
I think there's a lot of things that could be updated. I think the best way would have been to start with Article one and go through them. Make sure that you have the state ordinance, the town ordinances, the state statutes, the job description, the bylaws and the constitution. Because when you want to make a change like this, it needs to be changed across the board. If we voted this in, it would be in conflict with a bunch of different other things.
Can I just say something?
No.
Um, of the 169 towns and cities in the state of Connecticut, 80% of them run their park and rec the same way that we do it right now. The other 20% is for the bigger cities where, uh, uh, things have to be done right away. So you talk to any of the other smaller towns and they'll tell you the same thing. It's always the commissioner is in charge.
Yeah, we're not suggesting that the commissioner shouldn't be in charge. The chairman continues to be in charge here.
Right. Yeah. That's basically.
Um, and you know, going through the bylaws and the constitution, one by one, starting, the reason that we, we went here is obviously because we were asked to look at this because we thought we might be coming into tonight's meeting to talk about whether or not we were going to go with a dual chairmanship. So we looked directly at. Hmm?
The dual chairmanship was nowhere on the agenda.
Well, election of the chair, that's where we bogged, we bogged down on that last time. And this is where we came back in to say, you know, can we look at the bylaws? Can we look, is there even a provision for having co-chairs? We bogged down as a, as a full group at our last full meeting. And so we took it upon ourselves, we, we believe we were charged with looking at the bylaws, figuring this out. And this is what we found and came up with. If you start at the beginning, there are references to, um, you know, the, there are references, for example, all through the bylaws, there are references about the director, um, takes the minutes, takes the minutes, takes the minutes. Well, so we can start by, you know, start with Article one, but the heart of the matter comes here. Do we want to, as a commission, consider, and we don't have to vote it in right now, but do we want to, as a commission, consider adding another officerial duty as we have the right to do? Um, do we want to do that? Or how do we feel about that? And would, and our only idea was, we think that it would be a good idea to do that because we have a new incoming director who we could charge with more programmatic and maintenance oversight issues and less with clerical. You know, we, we do find that we think it's, I mean, okay, I don't want to speak for anybody else. I will say it is, I think it's weird that the director of park and rec who is a paid town employee, essentially, uh, the way that our commission is set up is to, is for a group of volunteers who are constantly shifting and moving to tell that person how to do his job.
Well, we have that in the sewer commission as well, so that the same setup.
And the planning and zoning, I believe.
And, yeah, exactly.
Well, this is good feedback. This is why we, um, you know, brought it to the commission. We weren't actually looking, I don't believe for any immediate response in this. It was just kind of a, you know, a progress check, update check, let you guys know where we were focusing on. Um,
Um, for the article five, uh, where it says the commission shall choose from its membership and may choose such officers as deemed necessary. Um, in your minds, that means that an alternate could be oh, um, elected as the secretary?
This is actually a direct, um, pickup and drop in from somewhere else in the bylaws that gives the commission, the, the, um, uh, the, I, yeah, this was somewhere, I can't remember off the top of my head exactly where this was, Kate or Michael, maybe you can help me out.
I mean, I think, I think it's important that, that if, if we're looking for that kind of um, duty for a commission person that, that an alternate who might be qualified to do that should be able to do that, even if, you know, so I just want to make sure the wording.
An alternate cannot be an officer.
An alternate cannot be an officer. So that takes care of that. It would have to be. And, and I, that's what I was assuming here, the commission shall choose, I was personally assuming based on conversation we had earlier tonight um, with Darlene, that, um, it doesn't seem that, um, although alternates are, I guess alternates are not, are not members.
Well, that's, there's also a line in there that indicates that they are members, but it's limited. They can't vote on certain things and, and, um, you know, they can't vote for appointments of like the chair and whatnot, but if you had a, somebody who's an active alternate and they're good at and want to be do the minute taking, they should be allowed to do that. I mean, that, that in my mind, I think that, you know, you, now all of a sudden you have eight people to, to pick somebody who's qualified to do that work.
Can't have eight people.
I believe that. It sounds like, I mean, so one of the, one of the things we'd have to determine would be if we would want to even move forward this, whether or not, I mean, and, and we can go, you know, to Jean and to, um, you know, if we want to go back to the, you know, the, the, um, the ordinance is, is very, very brief when it comes to, um, park and rec. It's two pages as opposed to
Right.
four or five of the bylaws and constitution. Um, but finding out, you know, and we can clarify that if we, if we decide that we want to say that we agree that an alternate is not a, um, a full member unless elevated. Um, and we want to use the word membership here that the understanding would be, or we could even say it clearly that if we wanted to have a, a secretary or a vice chair or whatever, um, that person would have to be nominated from among the members excluding the, um, the alternates.
That's under membership section eight that adds on and that you guys put in there.
I mean, I, I think they are, I think they are part of the membership because they're on committees and things and whatnot. So I just want to, I want to.
We have to clarify. So we have to clarify what membership, what membership means.
Yeah. I like, I, I like what is being done so far or the direction. So.
I think it's confusing to jump in the middle and pull out a few things instead of working together. Like we can't approve this because it's conflicting with other already approved documents. Whether they're going to be changed or not. The job description is actually going to the board of selectmen tomorrow to be approved. It has been approved by the commission. We've spent months and months at meetings going back and forth to the board of selectmen to get that job description approved.
Well, and you know, we're, I don't think we're going to be, um, we're not going to be in a position in the next week to try to make a change. I mean, the, if we're, if we decide that we'd like to go in this direction, this is just, this is simply a road sign. Which direction do we want to go in? And, uh, because when you review the rest of it, there's a lot of, we could go ahead and assume that everybody would want to do this. And then we can change every single thing in the bylaws and the constitution that has to do with anything on this page. But that's a lot of wasted work. If we then turn around and somebody says, well, I don't really like what has happened here. Then you throw it all out with the bathwater. What we are looking, what we did here was bring forth two significant pieces that would change, that would then cause us to make amendments in other parts of the bylaws and constitution and bring forward for discussion and, um, eventual approval, at which point then based on a new and updated constitution and bylaws, which is really our responsibility to do anyway. Um, what decisions we have made, how those impact something like a job description, three months down the road. Um, we can amend the job description. That's our power too.
Well, I mean, we just hired someone based on that job description.
Well, Lynn, I don't think anybody's, you know, thinking that that has to be etched in stone going forward though.
Lynn, do you think?
I mean, right for now, that's what it is, but, um.
Do you think that the, that taking notes at meetings is, is a, is, um, you know, that the job description hinges on taking notes at meetings? I think we were just trying to make the director more of an engaged person in meetings and maybe the, the act of taking notes during meetings was something that we could take off his plate so that he could be more an active member in the discussion at meetings was part of the thought process.
So the, um, director is very active in the meetings?
I don't, I don't dispute that.
And I'm just saying, again, I'm going to reiterate that it should have been started at the beginning. And you go through, okay, we did Article one, we didn't see, and there's nothing to change. We did Article two, there's nothing to change. We did Article three, there's nothing to change, or we see these minor changes. There's simple things right in the beginning, such as changing the timing or stuff in the meetings that could have been changed, that could have gotten taken care of and off the plate that don't, um, you know, you know, don't inflict anything else. Don't change anything else. Don't go against anything else.
And there are going to be pieces of this that don't need to change, but again.
Absolutely. But that's why you start from the beginning and you say Article one doesn't need to change, but and bring, you know, when you come to the commission, you say Article one doesn't need anything. Article two doesn't need anything. Article three needs to change. Um, you know, Article three looks membership. You know, there's some things that need to be changed, such as like timing. It says seven 30 in here, but we have our meetings at seven o'clock.
Yeah. I mean, obviously that's stuff that we, we know we want to get to. As I said, as a group of four, um, we felt that two things that would significantly impact changes throughout the documents were these two decisions. How do we feel about these things? We can certainly go ahead and do this exact same thing with all the rest of it. Um, now that we're not in a time crunch to bring it forward before what we thought was going to be discussion before an election that we did not have to, you know, we didn't have to do that today, which is great. But it's a lot of work to go through all of this. And if you are going ahead and making colorful things and trying to decide what the wording is going to be and crossing out and bringing forward a whole bunch of stuff that the commission as a whole, I mean, four people might feel that these are good things to make, but maybe the other people don't feel that. And so that's why we were hoping to get some direction for how people were feeling about this, this in general, rep, before we started going through the document with the fine tooth comb to make all of the, there will be other things to change beyond what is on, what is proposed here for sure, timing and, you know, voting by ballot, obviously that's got to come out. But this was just a, a roadmap for how are we kind of philosophically envisioning the relationship between the commission and the director going forward? Um, how do people feel about that? Do we want to make some, some changes which we four felt might be refreshing and give the director a little bit more responsibility at a directorship level?
And improve the efficacy of our group.
So you want to take work away from the new director?
We want to take minutes away from the new director twice a month or whatever meeting we're at. And instead have a volunteer on the commission that we choose who would be willing to do that piece and refocus the director's time for that and energy for that on doing even more to expand our programming and get involved with park maintenance.
I personally just don't think it's necessary, especially when it's already stated numerous places that, you know, and it could have, I would prefer if you would start in the beginning and then hit, you know, go through them so that you can find conflict. I think that by doing this, you're going to find a lot of other conflicts.
Lynn, can you, Lynn, can you explain why it's important to you that the director takes minutes at meetings?
Um, I feel like maybe there's somebody that wants to do it, but it's not easy, you know, there's a lot involved to take the minutes. There's setting up the Zoom meetings. So then the person has to be on the license. Um, you have to take the minutes. They have to be, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing, but it is an easy thing. It's.
Why is it important that the director does it?
Um, well, partly like I said, because we just all went through a few months of coming up with a job description that all of a sudden now we want to change. When we have a new person coming in who is based on that job description, he probably won't mind, but we are paying somebody to do this. And he will most likely be um, the Zoom licensee. It will go out of my name and into the director's name. And the director will be responsible for making up the Zoom meetings and making up the agenda with the help of the chairman that is also in the job description. Who wants, I mean, great for you. I appreciate Diane taking the minutes and, and, you know, Blythe, you've taken minutes before and, you know, there's, it's not, it's not just a quick little job. They all have to be sent out and they
Can I make a comment, although I'm not really on the commission right now because I'm alternate? It's a lot of work to take the minutes and now we've been on for over two hours and I will probably be going through the recording because I missed a lot of the motions and, um, it's, it's hard to pay attention to the meeting sometimes when you're taking minutes. I mean, it's, it's a lot to ask a volunteer also, so you might wanna consider that. And then when you're adding to that, well, do an agenda also. So now during the week, the person that's taking the minutes is also going to be trying to contact the chairman and the director and getting an agenda. It's a lot. I was kinda looking forward to the director coming aboard and taking over the minutes. So, I mean, I don't know if you guys, that might, that I could understand how it would be hard for a director to pay attention to the meeting while taking minutes. So maybe you wanna ask the commission members doing, do it on a rotating basis, but you're giving yourselves more work. Just keep that in mind because it's, it's a job, it's a secretarial job and you guys are volunteers on a commission and you're gonna be doing secretary work. Which is fine if that's what you wanna do, but just keep in mind, and I'm not opposed to it either because I think I think the director has to pay attention to the meeting and give his full attention to the meeting. But, you know, keep that peace in mind also.
I mean, if the minutes are, are being recorded, you could take, you could take those minutes at the end of the meeting and then just transcribe, transcribe it into a piece of paper.
You're right. It's a two hour meeting. It's a two hour, so I've had to actually listen to, you know, go through and go through a two hour meeting, two hour plus meeting again after sitting through a two hour meeting.
Right, right.
And it's a volunteer job, so it's a lot to ask a commission member also. But if you guys are up for it and maybe you wanna rotate the, you know, the person that does it to take it off the director's plate, then um, what if you just kept it in the director's job description but took it off his plate? I'm sure he's not gonna complain about having less work than he was hired for.
So I think we have, uh, yeah, we solicited a lot of good feedback on this, on this and we still have, uh, more meetings as a subcommittee. So we will, uh, you know, incorporate everything we've heard tonight and um, look, look at some other articles, starting with article one and, um, you know, keep everybody updated.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only way to handle it, Mike, is to start one and then work your way through it. You don't go to the middle of the book and then just, uh, come to the end, so.
I think it's up to the committee to decide where they wanna go and how to, with the idea that they are going to look at the bylaws. So, I mean, that's up to them how they wanna attack the bylaws. So.
And again, you know, I know you guys know these are hardworking documents. They're not changed willy nilly. They're not changed every year. Um, they are hardworking documents. They, you know, they're recorded, they, you have to go by these. And just make sure that they're not being changed because someone may not be happy with the current chairman, that they're being changed to reflect what's gonna happen in three, six, eight, 10, 20 years.
Lynn's right because, uh, the timing of this thing is, uh, kind of suspicious. Uh, those, those articles that were picked out, so.
But we, we've addressed that directly and denied that it's any type of ulterior motive. So that's, that's all we can do with that.
Well, it's too obvious.
Especially after that. We were, we were asked to do what we did and brought to the meeting. We were asked to look through the bylaws and find out where there might be support or ideas about other officers and that is what we did. There was no intent against any individual here.
Can you say that again? You, why did you pick the middle? Why did you pick five, six and seven?
Because we bogged down in the last meeting about voting. We, the idea of co-chairs came up. We did not know if it was in the bylaws or how to address that. We agreed that we would look at the bylaws and come forward with something. And so we had one hour before this meeting to determine where we were, um, where we were with those questions. Do we have the power to create additional officer ships? And if we did, what would that look like? And that's what we brought forward today for consideration.
Are you saying you were tasked with talking about a co-chairman? That you went back, did I mix? Guess I confused that.
Think you might be, she was talking about the formation of the committee itself as the task, what she was referring to.
Okay, there was something with being tasked about going to find an officer or chairman that I.
No one knew if we had the power as a commission to it, to add officers. That's where we started.
Okay. Don't get that, but okay. Um, on the article seven, there's three sections, but you guys only changed, or there's five sections. You only looked at section one?
I would just like to propose that we move on from this discussion at this point. Um, I think we've just explained why, given this the little amount of time that we had to look at where we were trying to go and to gauge where the commission wanted to go with a, a look at the bylaws and a look at officers. We restricted ourselves to, um, to the areas that we, to the pieces we felt were most appropriate to tonight's discussion, not the rest of it. We do need to go and look at others. We were hoping to have some direction from the commission, so we'll go and start at the beginning.
This is an ongoing, this is ongoing work. We're not finished. This was, this was just a direction.
And make sure that you, you know, there's no rush. There is no rush to bring things to this meeting today. There is no rush to get these done. I, you know, suggest you.
I think the rush, the rush that Blythe is talking about is, and I could be wrong here, but you have a week to get something on the agenda before a meeting. Is that true?
No.
Okay, I thought it was maybe, it was something to do like we were a week out from this meeting and I thought there was some procedural, um, reason for getting something in front of everyone, but again, it, it's, there's no, you know, secret society aspect of this subcommittee meeting. Um, and I, I really resent any, uh, kind of insinuation otherwise.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item, which is free skate. Now with new business. John, we've had, um, numerous people asking us about free skate. I should, I should back up. We are moving on, correct? We're, you guys have tasks to do and.
So the, the fee is like $300 and, um, we have to have some, uh, people on the ice to make sure for safety. So, uh, it's a great, uh, we've always had it. Um, and I think we should, you know, when the new chairman comes in, we should present this to the new chair, uh, the, the new, uh, park and rec director.
So can we still get that ice time, John?
Yeah, it's on Sundays only.
Does the commission want to make a motion to, um, run a couple of free skates at Kent School?
It's one hour long.
One hour long? We could run two or three Sundays in February?
Yep.
That is $300 for
For the one session? Yeah, Suzanne Boney. It's Suzanne Boney machine and, and the ice maintenance and stuff like that. So it's well worth it.
Is that something you guys are interested in doing? We would have to find a skate monitor.
Right.
How do we do that?
Um, advertise a lot of time. I don't, sometimes a commission member does it, sometimes, although if a commission member does it, you can't get paid. But we do have money in there for the ice monitor and the budget.
Yeah, $600 for, yeah, it's already in there for 600 bucks.
Um, we'd have to advertise to see if somebody wanted to go hang out for the hour.
So this is already in the budget?
Yep.
Uh, we do have funds in the budget to cover this. If we did three sessions, as you see the reports that I sent out, we still have quite a bit of funds left. We didn't use much this past year.
So you could, you could actually get, could you get like, uh, college kid or somebody or, you know, any, anybody who's a skater could be the skate monitor.
Yeah, I don't even know that they have to skate. They just have to be there to, um, you know, if somebody doesn't have a park pass, it's a $5 per person fee. So you'd collect that, um, answer questions, you know, it's, it's not very evolved job. It's pretty simple. Make sure that when the hour is up, you know, everybody gets off the ice. Diane, have you done that a couple of times? Or was it Tricia that did that?
I think it was Trish, right?
Tricia did that.
Oh, I think it's a good idea to, to do it. Cause I think it's been well received in the past, so.
Yes, definitely has, definitely has.
And there's been a bunch of people asking about it on Facebook.
Right. I say we move forward. Anybody disagree?
Can you make a motion, John?
Make a motion that we, uh, do, um, the free skate program that we've had in previous years, uh, dates to be decided. And what fee did you wanna charge?
Well, I, um, I think that's part of the park pass, but for anybody who doesn't have a park pass, I believe it's $5 for the hour for per person, not family.
Right. So we'll add that in there.
Um, so three, what did you say? Three sessions?
Three sessions, yeah.
That would be at $900. Plus the cost of the ice monitor.
Which was what, $18.75?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Blythe. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um.
So we're gonna need this treatment on the Bartlett, uh, the, uh, the ash bores are infesting Emery Park. So we've, uh, been treating this, this one big giant tree. And if we don't continue doing that, it's gonna rot away and cause some damage. Or we'll have to take it down, which will cost even more money, uh, anywhere it's up to two, two grand or more. Uh, it's one of the biggest trees there in the park, in the lower park. And, uh, I suggest we just keep doing the treatments to keep it going. Uh, it seems to be working, according to the, uh, to the guys that work there, injecting it.
It's $360.
Yeah, compared to like if you had it to come in, take it down, it's, you know, at least that much, three, uh, at least 2,000, so. And it is in a shady area and you need that shade, so.
John, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion, we'd be, uh, hire Bartlett tree to continue their ash board treatment on the, on the tree.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kent and Emery Park, we can skip over. Um, spring sports, we can skip if everybody's okay with that. Um, the annual report, I just wanna say good job. Thank you, everybody. That was wonderful collaboration. I had, um, besides dealing with ASP stuff for about eight o'clock on Saturday till about four o'clock on Saturday. I also had two family emergencies, two family members ended up in the ER, so, um, hence why I asked everyone to take that on and you all did a fantastic job and I'm really proud of the way you collaborated and got that done very quickly. Um, a special thanks to Rufus for helping with the idea, getting that off the ground. Michael, I know you had a lot to do with that. Very much appreciated. I think the, uh, report came out very nicely, especially for being done so quickly. And we were more or less just apprised that it had to be done that quickly. Great job there. We have an opportunity to go into executive session to discuss ASP staff. I think at this moment, it's nothing that needs to be discussed in ASP at this meeting, considering the time. And we can, uh, the next park and recreation meeting is February 7th at 7:00 PM. Anyone have anything else?
Lynn, can you just send me the recording right after we close, shut down? Thank you.
Sure, Diane.
Just wanna finish everything. Thanks.
Is Connie still on there?
She is. Hi Connie. Did you wanna ask her something, John?
Yeah, hey Connie, can I, can you, um, can you email me? I have something we have to discuss, uh, on the parks. Uh, those, there's three drains that are clogged.
Take care of that over, out of here.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, you're done. Actually, one of the reasons I was coming on, it, it, I, uh, the budget wasn't broken out in that detail, but just to know, you know, just so you know, the Kentland Trust is, um, willing to partner again on summer concerts, uh, if that's of interest to the commission. So, uh, we can wait. Doesn't have to be set in stone, but I just figured since you were doing your budgeting, um, you might as well know that, uh, that, that we're willing to be a partner again, for sure.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
All right. Hearing no other comments, we can adjourn this meeting at 9:25. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.